Good evening. And welcome to the Municipality of Anchorage zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals for February 13th, 2020. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Tonya Hickock.
Here.
Dell Smythe.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Monica Emmerton.
Here.
Jonathan Lang.
Here.
Stephanie Iker is excused. Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes for Thursday, January 9th, 2020. May I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Emmerton moves. Jonathan Lang seconds. Are there any changes to the minutes? additions, violations, corrections? Seeing none, is there any opposition to approval of the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. And we moved on to the Special Order of Business disclosures. Are there any disclosures this evening? Apparently not. And we move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of all matters before the board that do not require a public hearing. All items are approved by motion without debate. Do I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Smythe. And seconded by Ms. Hickock. Does any member wish to remove the item or items and item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there any opposition to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. And we move on to the next item that has something in it, which is public hearings. And there is one, one case. It's a variance case. And four variance cases. The Chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. So here's the procedure. The Board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The staff will present a brief outline of the variance. The Board members and the applicant may then ask questions of the staff through the Chair. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant to convince the Board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. The Board members and the staff may then ask questions of the applicant through the Chair. The hearing shall then be opened for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes. Individuals have three minutes. Time is kept by the Secretary. The display in the front will be green to within one minute of the time allowed, then will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. All members who wish to testify may be questioned by the Board members, the staff, and the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The Chair will then close the public hearing and the matter rests with the Board. Any action of the Board shall require the favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted Board. The fully constituted Board shall include all members of the Board, including vacancies, not excused for conflict of interest. So we don't have anyone excused for conflict of interest. And a full Board is actually nine members. So it will require five members for approval. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be met. Every final decision of the Board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal with Superior Court. Okay? With that, the first, or the only case, the case is Case 2020-0011. Lawrence and Barbara Brant. Are they in the office? They're in the office. Okay. So will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On December 23rd, 2019, 137 public hearing notices were sent out to neighboring property owners and residences. Notices of public hearing were also mailed to the Huffman O'Malley Community Council.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, will the staff then please present the case?
Thanks, Madam Chair. The petitioner requests a variance from AMC 2106020, the Table of Dimensional Standards in Residential Districts, to allow a Conex and shed structure to encroach 10.6 feet into a required 25-foot side setback and 41.3 feet into a required 50-foot rear setback. The need for the variance is to seek relief from the west side setback as well as the proposed front setback, from the right-of-way being dedicated with the subdivision in accordance with plating action S12503. That's in the process currently of final review. The original Lot 43A is being subdivided into two parcels, Lot 1 and 2, and through the plating process, a condition was placed to remove the structure that is in the setbacks of Lot 1 or obtain a variance. The Conex shed does not have non-conforming rights and the setback encroachment arises from the plating requirement of dedicating a cul-de-sac on Gamash Drive. The Conex shed was constructed in 1999 and the structure was placed in the side setback but met the front setback standard until the owner subdivided the lot. Findings, staff finds that Standard A is not met. There is no exceptional physical circumstances of the property. There are no streams, wetlands, or steep slopes on this lot. The lot size is 113,822 square feet, which is 26,702 square feet larger than the minimum required with the plating action. And the Conex shed was constructed by the owner. Standard B is not met. There is no physical circumstance of the lot contributing to the need for the variance. The lot is a conforming lot of record. The Conex shed was constructed with no permit and does not enjoy non-conforming rights. The entitlement action of the subdivision of the property and associated dedicated right-of-way for Gamash Drive created the need for the front setback variance. The side setback encroachment existed before the plating action took place. In matters of Standard C, staff finds that is not met. Structures, there's no stream, wetland, or slope creating a peculiar physical condition of the land. Structures placed on lots are in artificial condition. The encroachment is a result of the construction without a permit and associated subdivision plating action that requires that right-of-way dedication. The Conex shed does not meet the required 50-foot front setback and 25-foot side, which is in the R6 zoning district. Staff finds Standard D is met. There are no structure separation violations. Drainage runoff do not appear to be issues. There have been no objections from the neighbors or the community council. There was a couple, there's eight letters of support from the neighbors, including the most affected neighbor to the west. Standard E is met. The requested variance will not change the character of the zoning district in which the petition site is located. The R6 district is intended for detached, single-family, two-family residential on large lots. Then granting, granting the side and front setback encroachment will not permit either a principal or accessory use other than what is already permitted under this code. Standard F has been found to be met. There are no identified health or safety issues with the property. Standard G, the variance is not related to ADA accessibility. Standard H, staff has found that that standard is not met. The 10.6-foot encroaching into the 25-foot side setback and 41.3-foot encroaching into the 50-foot front setback is not the minimum variance necessary for the reasonable use of the land. The need for the variance was created by the siding of the Conex shed location when it was constructed by the owner and subsequent subdivision plating action. There is area on the lot to build a shed that meets the setbacks. The owner has stated, though, he consulted with Building Safety about setback and permit requirements before placing the structure. The encroaching allows the use of the land without disturbance and clearing of trees, coupled with the financial costs of moving the structure. And staff find requires that all eight standards be substantially met in order for variance to be granted. And the Department finds that approval criteria A, B, C, and H are not met, therefore recommends denial of the variance. However, if after a public hearing, the Board finds that those standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to conditions 1 and 2, found on page 6 of the staff packet. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions, staff, by the Board? Mr. Smythe.
Thank you, Dave. Good presentation. This is more in general with the variances that, assuming, when they're approved, so assuming this one were approved, what conditions other than what was here would be required for this shed into the future? By allowing the setback variance, could they do then anything in the future to this shed that met current code and close it? Add more power, add plumbing? What are the limitations on this if the variance were granted?
Through the Chair, Mr. Smythe, well, they'd have to get permits for that, for anything that would be required, or anything they'd want to upgrade like power like that. The only thing they could do is they could not increase the variance. Like, you know, we're at 10.6 feet into the 25-foot setback. They couldn't add anything that's gonna make, increase that variance into, into the setback.
So in theory, anything allowed by code, they could upgrade this shed in the future within, with this setback variance granted?
As long as they don't encroach, increase the nonconformity, like encroach into the setbacks or anything like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Lang.
Through the Chair, Mr. Odell. Is, with the plating action, are they going to be required to reconstruct that cul-de-sac?
Through the Chair, I may have to resort to the applicant for that. I can't quite remember the conditions. Let's, let's take a look real quick. I thought I put, maybe I did not put the conditions in this. I don't believe they're gonna have to construct that cul-de-sac. No. They're just dedicating it. And I believe part of that is their current driveway. Yep.
Are there any questions, staff, by the Board? Are there any questions, staff, by the applicant? They indicate not. Okay, then, will the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward? State and spell your name for the record, please.
Okay. It's Melissa Branch, B-R-A-N-C-H.
Please present your case.
Okay. I'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal, so I don't forget. Sean did an excellent job summarizing. We'd like to point out, I feel like that there is a physical circumstance in, on the property in that the shed is already there. It's not something that they're trying to place now and they do have to comply with code. And that the owner, who's here with me and is gonna speak in a moment, did consult staff. And I know they didn't get the name and the number, and that's something that, as a professional, I'm trained to do, but, you know, a layperson and a resident doesn't think to do. And asked the question and thought he was doing the right thing when he placed it 20 years ago. And the plating is what brought this to light. And we feel like now, so if we were setting it now, it's a much different situation. It's an existing thing, and now it's a very costly relocation. And that the neighbors have no issues because of the trees and the screening and maintaining that rural setting. And Sean spoke to the rights, our planning staff spoke to the rights that have that. I mean, that they can't expand the shed and expand into that. We feel it's the minimum request in that it was encroaching in the west yard. So if it wasn't encroaching in the west yard, we could have gotten grandfather rights with the right-of-way dedication and the plating that's going on for the north. So that's kind of that exacerbation with it, but that it really is the minimum in the west yard so that it doesn't have to be moved from where it is right now. And the other thing I'd like to point out is that with the self-imposed, again, it really is because it was due to improper guidance, because they did ask the question as they were permitting their home and the development of the property to begin with. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Brant because he has some things that he would like to say to you.
Yes, I'm Mr. Brant, the owner of the property. First, I want to say is, 20-some years ago when I did this, my wife has been the president of Alaska Kennel Club for 30-some years. When we bought the place, put our house on, I told my wife, Spurklin come up there to put the sewer system in, the engineer, they went east-west with it. They cleared out trees, everything. Then they decided the state, I went, had to go through the state because I put in a big duplex. State said, no, we want to go north, south. So they run it north, they cleared a bunch more trees and run it there. So I told my wife, I says, you know, the Kennel Club is paying about $400, this has been back 20 years ago, to rent a couple of storage, heat storage, to keep all their stuff. They have to furnish all their own stuff. So I said, honey, why don't we just put a container on there? I will raise it up truck height, because 90% of the people in the Kennel Club are women. The women do all the work. And they're all up in their 50s. Back then, my wife was one of the youngest. Now, I did that. I went down to the municipality. I just got done building the house and went through all the stuff with them. So I go down to municipality, I come in there, I had my sketch. I showed them where it was. I told them that I'd like to put a container on there. I'm gonna put it up on piling. I told her, the lady says, you don't need no permits. Now, they say I didn't have permits. When I went in and seen Dave, the first thing I told him, he said, I said, I don't have permits. He said, no, we can't find any. I said, well, I just told you, I didn't have one. They told me I didn't need one. Anyhow, that's how that got going. They've used it for 20 years. I, when I found out that we might, if I have to move it, I've got a quote, for about $15,000 to put piling in, move everything over. So I told my wife to tell the Kennel Club, you know, we've donated it all these years. She's a real good member and been at it, and it's her love, not mine. I'm on a fixed income. I'm not gonna spend $15,000 to give to the Kennel Club, even though that's my wife's love. I just don't have it to spend to do that. Then, I can answer any question. I'm gonna brief it up real quick with a summary. I can tell you all the reasons why, that I wrote down why, but I only got a few minutes, I understand, so I'm not gonna waste a bunch of time. But when we was in there talking to Dave Whitfield, he told me, if I would move that container before we get this thing platted, he will give me grandfather rights. That's that 10-foot, I gotta move it over. To me, my grand, my dad, we live to be 98, he told me common sense is a real good thing. So, common sense tells me, if I move it today before you guys get, for everybody, the borough gives me that plat, I can do it. And then there's no problem. But if I don't, which I just got to plat 10 days ago, if I don't, then I gotta move it 50 feet, because that becomes my front yard instead of 25 feet. We'll put it on top of my septic system, so I can't do that. I mean, it's just, and common sense tells me if it was good today, if I do it today, but soon as I plat it, then I gotta move it another 25 feet, 50 feet in, for $15,000, it, it's not hurting a thing. It's a beautiful building. And to move, originally, they wanted the road. And I told them, no, because I, I would have had to move the Kennel Club building off there right off the bat. Then they come up with a cul-de-sac. That was good. That Friday night before my son sat in there with Dave, everything was a go except for the signature. Monday morning, they come down with, have to move the Conex. That's why we're here. But anyhow, I just think that in order to do anything, they've gotta get 30 feet to put the road through. They'd have to get 30 feet by 360. They'd have to get Bruce's 30 feet for 360. They gotta get Anderson's 30 feet for 360. And then I think their names, Kirsten, what is it, Kirsten?
Horstine.
Yeah. They gotta get his 30 feet. And then they gotta move Gamash over to my property, which is about 20 feet from where the road is. They gotta move the whole road over to get the cul-de-sac to go into Bruce's and my property. And he's the only one that, in effect, everybody else has got roads they can come to to get to their property. Another thing, Bruce and I talked. I told him, I would give him a deed to 20 feet, 30 feet, whatever he wants for driveway, right there, that corner that's beyond the road, he can have it. I'll sign it over to him. I'll do whatever it takes. That's better than having him this mess. But no, I got two choices. This cul-de-sac, or give him the roadway. I, I, you and the rest of my time for questions or whatever, if I can, I don't know how this works, but...
The questions aren't part of your time.
What's that?
The questions are not part of your time.
Questions, no time?
The questions, the questions that we ask you are not part of your time. You have the 10 minutes.
I could go on and tell why I think. When I went down to the municipality 20 years ago and they said, do it, I don't know who I talked to, the lady, I have no idea. I tried to find out about putting a Conex today, even this morning, up on the hillside on my property. Good luck. I should be a lawyer to find that out. I don't think they have any restrictions. And I think 20 years ago, I bet if you asked that gentleman, they did not have where I had to have a permit. Because they told me I didn't. So how can I prove that I did or didn't? I hear people putting them in all the time. I called the Conex container, come here 30 years they've been in business. I asked her about, do you have to have a permit? She says, I guess I'm done. She says that happens all the time. My time up?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Wait. Are there any questions up by the Board of Mr. Brant? Mr. Smythe.
I couldn't find in the application, it was referenced that it was difficult to move. You said you got a cost to relocate it on a new pile foundation. It looks to me like a Conex and a shed.
Yeah, yeah. And it's all on piling. I put it on piling.
Is it driven piling that you've got it sitting on?
What's that?
Driven piling?
Yeah, I had a weld guy come down and drive four-inch casing all around.
Ah, yeah.
And it's down all sides, on the container, across the back, and everything's on piling.
Ah, yeah.
And still, the biggest expense, not only tearing apart, putting the back together, but putting all the piling and everything in and moving it. And I don't know where I'd move it. Maybe to the other end of my new lot, if this happens. I don't know. And which won't be my property anyhow, but, you know, I, I just don't know what to do. I'm at your mercy. I hope, you know, I'm just thinking, like my dad says sometimes, common sense, nobody objects. They'll never put a road through there. Now that if they're gonna put a cul-de-sac, nobody's gonna be driving back where it is I just, I guess I'm at your mercy.
Any other questions of Mr. Brant? Thank you.
You're welcome.
She still have her two? So is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in this case? Anyone at all? Come forward.
I'm Bruce Giffen, G-I-F-F-E-N. And my wife Chloe's back there also. And we are Larry's neighbors directly to the west, so we're on that adjoining property line. And he put that Conex in 1999. We built our house a couple of years before that. And it's been there for 20 years, his Conex has been there for 20 years. And, you know, no one has objected to it being where it's at, including us. And now all of a sudden, I guess there's an issue with it there. But Chloe and I, even right now, we have no issue with him keeping his Conex where it's at.
Are there any questions of Mr. Giffen? Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Come forward.
I forgot one real important part about what you said.
Sorry. No.
I gotta wait. I get to talk first. I'll only take 15. So my name is Larry Brant, B-R-A-N-D-T, so you could guess who I'm related to. And there was just a couple of things that I wanted to say when this process, you know, all started. You know, a few of the things is, you know, when it comes to the Conex, right, in question, I know that my father mentioned to you that it was part of the Alaska Kennel Club, and it's where they store everything in there. They are a nonprofit organization. You know, for them to go out and have to find someplace else, obviously, would put a hardship on them also. You know, the, I mean, they're a great community. Who doesn't love dogs? And I can tell you that my mother surely has dedicated her life to that, and a lot of her friends. So, you know, I, I think the other part for, and I don't believe that it got touched on yet, is if the Conex has to be moved, and it is moved to the east, it will be on top of the septic system. So, you know, that's not gonna be a viable option. So I think, like I said, all the neighbors have been in support, the utilities have been in support. You guys have seen that. There's no objections from any of the neighbors. So I would hope that you guys are able to approve the variance. That's all I got.
Any questions of Mr. Brant? Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to testify in case 2020-0011? Anyone at all? Are there any questions of... Okay. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
No.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any rebuttal? Or would, yes?
After everything you've heard, I think what I'd like to drive home is that, one, it's a retired couple on a fixed income, and the variance is to leave an existing condition that doesn't impact what we are dedicating with the plating process we're going through for right-of-way or the neighbors. As the neighbors have testified to in their letters of support and here tonight, the shed is existing, so it is a physical circumstance, even though it's not property streams or anything and/or grade. And that it really truly is the minimum variance to leave it as it is for them, and so that we believe the standards are met for the work. Is there anything you would like to say?
Yeah, if I could.
Okay.
I heard him, I think, I don't hear real good, but I thought he said that it was 10 feet short on the west and 43 feet short at the back of my lot. My lot's 330 feet. The container's 40 feet, and it's sitting 115 feet off my front of my driveway. So I take 115, add 40 to it. I think I'm not 43 feet short from that 300 and something. I had it rolled down at home, but, do you understand what I'm saying? I don't know where they get that 43 feet short.
It's from a hundred.
What's that?
It's from the new right-of-way.
Oh, the new right-of-way. Oh, okay. Well, we don't have that new right-of-way yet, I don't think. But, and then it'd be 10 feet, but he told me then I had to move it 50 feet. Is that right? The new right-of-way, that becomes my front yard, Dave said. So is it 25 feet or is it 50?
There's two setbacks. There's a side setback and a front setback.
I, I can only...
The, the front setback would be for the new plating action, and the side setback is what was existing. So think 10 feet for the side and 41 feet, .3 feet for the new front. Melissa may be able to show it to you on a, on a graphic.
Well, anyhow, that'll put it up on my sewer. If I have to move 40 feet to the east, it'll be up in my sewer system. And I don't think they'll allow me to do that. No?
I don't believe they will.
Okay, and...
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So the public hearing is closed now, and the matter rests with the Board. May I have a positive motion, please? Ms. Hickock.
Move to approve Case 2020-011. Including department recommendations on page six.
Seconded by Mr. Lang. Would you speak to your motion, please?
I believe in finding A, that there does exist a physical extraordinary circumstance, and that the Connex and the shed are existing. Also, there, with the dedication and the re-subdivision of the cul-de-sac, I believe that is an exceptional physical circumstance, doesn't normally occur. Additionally, on finding B, I believe this standard is met. Because of those physical circumstances, the strict application of this code would create undue hardship to the property owner that is a fixed income. Additionally, there is an existing septic system that would be incringed upon. And then, under finding C, while it was self-imposed, as the petitioner mentioned, it was out of bad advice from the municipality that it did occur. If they had given proper advice, it would've not occurred. Finding D, E, F, and G, I would have to concur with staff's findings that those standards are met. And in finding H, I believe the stand, the standard is met because of the physical circumstances, that would be the minimum that the, would make future use of the shed and the Connex possible.
Mr. Lang?
Yes, I concur that the standards do appear to be met. My concern that the cul-de-sac would be constructed would change the character of the neighborhood and would potentially expose the Connex to the viewing public, but it sounds like this is a pretty substantial improvement. And as I've said in previous hearings, nothing would change on the ground if, if the plat action didn't go through. So I would say that condition C is met, because even though the petitioner did place the improvements there, if not for the plating action, it would conform to the front setback at least. And I will be supporting the motion.
Mr. Hale?
Through the chair, thank you. I've read through the packet, I've looked at all of the exhibits, and I, I understand that there's quite a bit of hardship here, but I feel like as a board member, I'm bound to support the codes of the municipality. And I'm gonna have a hard time supporting this, because I don't see that there are any physical circumstances that are extenuating at all. I feel like, like with B, I understand it's an undue hardship, but it is self-imposed. I don't, I don't see how it was not. It was originally built into the side. We have a plating action, which is, you know, you, you can choose to plat and subdivide or not. You have, and I don't know how that cannot be self-imposed. And so I guess I, I do feel that C is, is self-imposed, and, you know, we have to meet all eight of these in order to grant the variance. I don't think that we are meeting those at all. So unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to support it.
Anyone else?
Additionally, with Mr. Hale, I, I feel like we see these cases quite a bit. The existing conditions are something that, to me, mean a lot when it's been there twenty years. My concern is that the board does set precedence through every one of these by allowing the variance without any other conditions. As I clarified with Mr. Whitfield, you could be free to do anything to this parcel within its footprint, whether or not you intend to. It would carry on to the next owner's improvements and could have quite an impact. I, the fact that it was, just for the group to consider also, a shed was only ever allowed with no permit if under a hundred-and-twenty square feet. At no time in the last twenty years in the municipality have you been able to put piles in the ground and build a structure without a permit. I, I apologize, I think it's terrible that you were misguided or potentially, but that is, it, it, it could not, very difficult for that to happen. In the beginning, I assumed this was a Connex set on pad that could easily be moved, and it's a fairly substantial construction and, and, and would require quite a bit, and will to move, and I think appropriately. I, I, I feel for the situation you're at. Actually, you remind me of my own father and the situation he's in, and I, and I, but still, I cannot, I don't think I can support the motion because of what has not been met.
Ms. Emerson? I have a question of staff. Could you address the purpose of a setback, particularly that front setback?
Through the chair, or Madam Chair, let me take a look in definitions for you real quick. Hang on one second. Madam Chair, so the definition of front setback is just a setback that extends across the frontage of a lot or tract on a right-of-way of a street. Now, a required setback establishes a minimum required separation distance, with the exception that a required maximum setback establishes a maximum allowed separation distance. It doesn't really go into the definition of, of why setbacks exist. And that's separation, basically, from a right-of-way, a road, or another house. So, you know, we see setbacks for structure separations, basically. So here, in this case, it's, it's for the, the right-of-way in a rural R-six zoning district.
So there's no really safety consideration? Fire truck can still turn around?
Correct, correct. Fire has a little different, they have, they have fire separation standards which are different. This is a Title 21, R-six zoning setback standard. Yep, you're, you're, you're correct.
Ms. Hickok?
Through the chair, question of staff. How do lots forty-five and forty-six currently maintain access?
Through the chair, Ms. Hickok, which page are you looking at there?
I'm looking at page twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay. You said lot forty-five and forty-six?
Yes.
So that's gonna be, and that's why we've said Gamache could be a cul-de-sac, is Totem Road, East Clat Road will be able, if it's ever further subdivided, and our road, in that, they all have, be able to access through those dedicated streets.
So then, am I to understand that Gamache is only for access for lot one? The proposed lot one?
Gamache is gonna come down, access lot one, but also if lot forty-four A to the west ever gets subdivided, that's gonna, that's where they're gonna get their access, or, you know, through road, through there.
Well, how do they get access currently today, forty-four A?
Currently, it would be through our road.
So it has physical and legal access today?
Yes, yep.
So the only access this is serving for this cul-de-sac is lot one?
Currently, yes. You could, with the, with the dedication of this plat, they'll be able to get access, yeah.
And so that is a unique, I would like to, can I add to my findings?
Sure.
Finding A, also, I think we could add that it's a very unique circumstance, and that the only access for this cul-de-sac would be for this lot one. Serves no other purpose.
Anything else? Any other discussion? If not, then we'll vote. Who's opposition? We have five positive votes, so the variance is granted.
Thank you.
So that's it for public hearings. And on to reports. I have nothing to report. Secretary?
Through the chair, there is no March meeting. The resolution from tonight's case will be on April's agenda. You also have a new member, Jackie. Savannah, is that it? Will be with you on, in April's meeting. So she's been appointed. Welcome. And that's it, thank you.
Do you have any committees? Any other board member comments? Saying nothing, entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Smythe, seconded by Mr. Lang, we are adjourned.